Thirty-five-ish.
Is Kiana listening?
Yes. Yes. And, uh, first order of business is public comment. Please introduce yourself. Andrew, with the camera as well.
You're not gonna hear it, Kiana, because it's to the microphone. Okay. I was like, hello. My name is Kiana Baumler, and I am a Montpelier High School drama director. I've also directed the Main Street Middle School, Crafters Edge, eighth grade productions for the past two years, and I just finished the Main Street Middle School fifth through eighth grade musical. I'm also on the auditorium renovation teams for both the high school and the upcoming UBS renovation. But during the school hours, I am a flexible pathways teacher for Montpelier High School. Additionally, I am here today as a Montpelier resident and the mother of two upcoming school-aged children. And I'm here specifically today to ask the board to seriously consider how our district can more formally support theater arts education in our schools. Over the past four years as the Montpelier High School drama director, I've experienced a significant increase in students who seek me out to engage further in theater. They want to deepen their learning experience, get involved for the first time, or use their skills to contribute to a production. I'm constantly finding myself in a position where students want to engage more, and they need educational support. In short, they need me to design the learning experience to fit their needs. And this experience is exhilarating and inspiring to me as an educator, but it requires my expertise and a lot of well-spent time. For this reason, I feel it is important for me to share today and advocate for the work I've already started, but need financial and structural support to continue providing. My goal tonight is to, as quickly as I can, quickly highlight why this conversation is important, timely, and needed, and why it should not be overlooked as a part of the FY21 budgeting process. The added value and potential impact of this work will have important results that positively impact our schools. My first point is that theater arts as a curriculum is a missing pillar in our district's arts education. Theater arts is an important industry in our society, both as live theater and connected with film and television. The study of theater arts is rich in technical and transferable skills and is easily connected with very relevant project-based learning by connecting production programming with curriculum work. Productions are a cornerstone of a theater arts program, which are expanded with educational coursework. The complex deadline-based productions are host to many student-driven opportunities to plan, problem-solve, and create with their peers. The nature of a production team and ensemble requires students to work together and develop a sense of community around shared goals. Working on a team requires communication, and telling stories require understanding and interpretation. I can go on and on about the relevance of theater opportunities to learning and how engaging the process can be. Secondly, I'd like to talk about community. We in Montpelier and Roxbury believe strongly in community connections, and theater provides a tremendous opportunity to connect with the school community, where students work together on something that's created using our students' talents. Students share a sense of pride and ownership for the finished performance. There's a sense of family and community that comes from being involved in creating something unique. With strong theater arts programming, the school community and culture are positively impacted, and students learn an appreciation for the arts. And with that appreciation comes a more tolerant and supportive culture. One district phrase that sticks out to me is "all means all." I can't think of a better way to work towards this goal than exploring theater arts as an option. Theater, whether it's live or filmed, is society's mechanism for examining the human experience. It explores relationships and humanity as its content and provides the opportunity to discuss and react. The process of putting together a production requires the work of a diverse set of people, from talented performers to tech wizards to builders and painters and cosmetic artists. They all work together to accomplish a common goal. This process requires there to be diversity. It requires acceptance, appreciation, and the ability to trust many people as a part of the team. The theater is a tremendous place for people of all identities to find a home and a space to contribute and learn important skills. "All means all" means having diversity in our opportunities and diversity in our arts offerings, providing diversity in the ways that students can express themselves and their learning. One thing that our current budget is trying to address is the need for additional social-emotional support. Theater is an incredible setting for social-emotional work and therapy. Role-play work, character work, and working on the self is a huge component of theater in addition to the plethora of opportunities to do hands-on projects and make meaningful contributions. I would like the district and staff to consider recognizing the potential use of theater arts as a strategic place to incorporate opportunities and experiences geared toward supporting students with significant social-emotional needs. These opportunities would be on campus, connecting with a school community, and work with peers in a positive and purposeful way. Last but not least, I must address human capital, which is me in this room. A large part of my request today and for the past six months is to bring recognition to the work I do as an educator and to recognize the work as being the work of a theater arts educator and not just a co-curricular. I'm a licensed educator that applies my knowledge of curriculum and student learning to the design of my theater arts program. And this work that I've done over the past four years has grown the program, inspired more students to engage with this work in meaningful ways. In a recognized theater arts educator position, my work would be more appropriately valued, and I would be given more time to align the strategic opportunities within the district with the needs of our students. I have taught in many settings, but I am most inspired by the teaching I do within the theater. I believe in the work, and I see its impact every day on the students and on the community. The work I've done within the Montpelier schools has taught me that there is a real need for a dedicated, experienced point person for the theater in the district. Teachers and students in all of the Montpelier town schools have sought my help in the past couple of years, and I'd like to formally help them, as well as the Roxbury Village School, with their programming dreams, all in support of our very diverse and deeply wonderful students. As a community member, I continue to give my time, energy, and passion for growing theater in this community, because I really want this community to have a strong theater program for my children. My daughter starts in kindergarten next year, and she's very interested in theater already. And I want her and her peers to have consistent theater opportunities as an option right next to athletic, music, and other academic opportunities, creating a more equal culture and social scene relating to interests and talents. My hope for the district is to have strategic and appropriate theater arts programming from K to 12 and for flexible, and for a flexible pathways nine through 12 to connect the extensive amount of work done by our students to specific theater arts proficiency standards. Supporting more theater arts in this district with a licensed theater arts educator doing this strategic work will support in students having a stronger sense of school pride, self-confidence, and belonging that will have positive impacts on our school culture and behavior. My ask of the board and the budget is as follows: A point-two theater arts flexible pathways teacher position at MHS, which provides the opportunity for students to complete those personalized learning studies in theater arts; and a point-four theater arts program director position, which would absorb the co-curricular role to recognize the significant amount of teaching and curriculum-based planning and design that goes into running a theater program and using the productions as strategic learning environments for all students. Thank you very much for your time and commitment to this school district and our students, and I'd love to engage more in this conversation. And I do have with me, since my speech was so long, and I'm very sorry, I do have that speech written out, as well as I had multiple parents and students that couldn't make it tonight that I've been collecting evidence from, and they have provided written copies of those for all of you.
Great, thank you. Yeah, pass it down.
So, okay. Thank you.
No, that was excellent, thank you. I do see a fair amount of people.
Do you think there's a restorative justice?
Yeah, exactly. That's restorative justice I know, so I just wanna be kind of mindful.
I think a lot of them are with me.
Yeah, it's super random. Well, I just wanna see if there's a lot of other people wanna talk, and, um, so raise your hand if you wanna speak.
I brought something up, so I could just share it.
Okay, you can turn. My other thing is if you're speaking on the same subject, I think she gave us a lot of information.
Yes.
If you just wanna say "me too," please try to make it short and just, you know, try not to be repetitive, because we do wanna move things along. But please speak, we usually try to keep the whole thing to five minutes, and it's already been over. No, that's totally good. I just wanna, I want people to speak, but just be mindful of time, you know, we've got a lot of great information here, so if there's anything additive, you know, try to keep your comments to things that are additive, but feel free to say "I fully support this, thank you," if that's kind of the gist of your comments. So go ahead.
My name is Marnie Lakin, and I'm a resident here in Montpelier, and I fully support Kiana's proposal. But in addition, I would like to add, the middle school drama club is also completely not funded, even after a year, more than a year now, but after a year of success, the idea was that they would be funded in the current year that we're in, and that never happened. And instead, or in spite of, the production that just happened last week was phenomenal. But all of the adults were volunteers. And there were 42, I think, students involved. That was four days a week after school for the entire semester, you know, until last weekend, plus evenings. And yet, how does that compare to coaching? How does that compare to sports programs? And how many students are really involved? And I think that it's time for the Montpelier-Roxbury School District to really step up and acknowledge what kids wanna do and where they're spending their time and how they're spending their time. I mean, I'm an arts educator as well, so I could go on and on, as Kiana did, for the benefits, but I really just think you need to look at the numbers and look at what the kids are doing, and make it equitable, no matter, you know, no matter what the kids want to do, so.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, my name is James Nagel, and I'm the father of June Nagel, who is a senior now at Montpelier High School. And, but for the theater arts and the coral programming here, she would not be the person that she is today. And the fact that Kiana has worked specifically with June, but also with all the other MASC Club folks, and has really watched them from the time they were fifth grade on, it's been remarkable. And I just wanna say that this is something you should be supporting. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Hi.
Hi, I'm Ella Darcy.
I'm a point of worship to students here.
Yeah.
Speaking for Kiana. The MASC theater program has taught us so much.
Just over the past year, theater has drastically improved our comprehension skills, social abilities, public speaking, self-confidence, and our overall happiness.
Without theater, we know we would not be as strong of learners as we are today.
Theater keeps us more engaged and interested than most of our core classes.
We really wish it was possible for us to get an art credit from theater, especially since it is a combination of all the arts the school offers plus a few it doesn't.
Kiana has made the transition to MHS so much easier, as she has welcomed us and made us feel like we are part of a community.
She makes every show special and unique. Just imagine what she could do if she could fully come into here. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Everybody, if I read, it'll go quicker, so fear the paper. I don't care. So I'm Joe Carroll, I'm a Montpelier resident and teacher here at the high school, and I'm emphatically supporting the proposal that Kiana mentioned. As you probably know, the high school unit design template, and I hope that's my ad here, I do appreciate that we're all here in support of it. My ad is about the actual unit template that we use to design instruction here, and it's based on this book called Understanding by Design by Grant Wiggins and Jay McTye. And at the top of it, it highlights us most importantly what we call the enduring understanding, or in Montpelier High School English Learning Expectations. These are the transferable skills that rise above any one particular subject's content area. And for folks who don't speak teacher language, what that means is that students retain not specific pieces of content, but deep learning based on understanding how that learning applies across and within other disciplines and all aspects of life. And that's what I mean when I say transfer, transferable skill. And as someone who teaches a subject about which folks often ask, "Why would somebody learn that?" I relate to, understand, and completely agree with Kiana's emphasis on transferable skills. In a certain sense, the question is no longer "why would somebody learn something," but instead, "what is the transfer and learning potential from that course of study?" The potential amount of content information is so vast that the "what" is no longer as important as the "how" and the "why." Sure, it may appear at face value that math, science, English, and social studies and other required courses are, um, sorry, I lost my place. I said I would read it real quick, I'm sorry. Those subjects would be the must-knows, but in reality, the unit design of our school essentially rejects a hierarchy of content and instead emphasizes deep learning, no matter what the course. But another way, making kids self-aware, purpose-driven, and in a sense, whole. In the 21st century, knowledge of discrete content information is nowhere near as important as the ability to know how to learn, and as the ancients said, "know thyself." Theater under Kiana's expert caring management does that to a huge extent for the kids' involvement, and could potentially do that for many more kids whom the current system and its current structure cannot serve. Kiana is proposing to expand that access, and I say we support her to that end. All this is to say, among other reasons, as a resident and as an educator, I endorse wholeheartedly Kiana's theater arts proposal. To me, the question isn't really, "should we do this?" But why would we not give this demonstrably powerful learning experience more support? And why would we not further empower this highly effective educator to continue her excellent work? The learning potential is enormous, and we owe it to our community and our kids to further develop this program. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I just wanna add.
Yeah, go for it.
I don't wanna read everything, I just wanna read the last paragraph. So, my name is Melanie Taylor, I'm a parent, I'm the mom of Eve here, she's one of the theater programs. So, I just wanna read about, "For the students and commitments that don't have the chance, so having a class for theater arts within school provides students with commitments after school and an opportunity to experience the benefits and positive aspects of theater. Currently, students do not have an opportunity, I mean, to gain credit for the hard work they put into the theater program after school. Having a class would allow students to pursue what they love in school while being exposed to the academic aspect of theater." It'd be nice to let it go for as a curriculum as a class.
Okay.
I'm Molly Clark, I'm the choral director here at the high school and at the middle school. I work very closely with Kiana, and I just wanna make it known that I'm in full support of everything I will not go into, because I too could ramble on and on and on about arts opportunities. But I do think that we are currently not serving our students to our fullest potential by our current arts offerings. I think the lack of diversity that we have right now is not, doesn't align with our values as a school and a district. So I think that we, as a community, can be giving more for our students in terms of arts.
Great, thank you. Molly?
Hi, I'm Melanie Meyer, and I have two daughters at Main Street Middle School, in the fifth and the seventh grade. They were heavily involved in this family lot this season, and it was what I believe to be, it was a life-changing experience for them. I'm gonna read you just a snippet, because I feel so passionately about a couple of the bullet points I put down. "After being involved in extracurricular productions in different capacities for the past two years, our children have grown in both confidence and enthusiasm. Being involved in theatrical productions has taught them to work with others in an ensemble, helped them to build their social skills, develop new friendships, and has encouraged them to take positive chances on themselves by opening up to the vulnerability and possibility that comes with auditioning for a role. I hope they consider inclusion of support for the theater program in the district going forward. My children will enthusiastically participate, and I believe that this is a great opportunity for healthy self-expression and social and emotional development."
Fantastic, thanks.
Hi, I'm Mark Blackser, I moved recently to Montpelier. My son is in the middle school, my daughter's in the high school. There are several reasons why we chose to move to Montpelier, but a critical part of that was based on discussions before we moved here with Kiana. I concur with all that has thus far been spoken. Kiana is dynamic, she's on fire. Let's go.
Sam.
I'm Sam, right here. Yeah.
Not currently ignited.
What?
No, Sam is on fire too.
I was a very theater-obsessed kid, and there weren't any opportunities really for plays or musicals in the elementary school or in the, in the middle school until eighth grade. So I was always like traveling out of town, like schlepping myself to prom and stuff, like on some school nights, just so I could like maintain my, uh, uh, excitedness. Yeah, actually, but yeah. But once I got to eighth grade, I was really excited, and Kiana made that incredible. Yeah, 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 I was in those movies, it was really fun. And...
Maddie Kaskar.
Yeah, it was really cool. And, but I, I really wished during my middle school years leading after that, that there was like a whole school play or something. And I'm really happy for the middle schoolers now that they have that, and Kiana has implemented that and brought that there, because the, yeah, the, that was something I really wished was part of my experience, so I think that's really cool. And yeah. That's a good point. Nice, right?
I agree with everything that everybody said. My name's Julia, and I have a son who's a sophomore. I think that the only thing I will add is that my child was a confirmed introvert, comes home and couldn't be more excited when there's a play. And I thank you so much for that. But he, it gives him an opportunity to take risks that he might not otherwise take, like he said out in the musical, wishing he could be part of it, but didn't really dare to last year, and this year he went out for it. And I don't think he ever would've done it if it weren't for Kiana's dynamic approach to theater and the amount of excitement that she brings with it, but also, also discipline. I think that my kids definitely are learning a lot from having this opportunity, and I hope that it goes forward.
Great, okay. Excellent, anyone else? Great, well, thank you, everyone. We really, I love it when people come out passionately on an issue like this. And I'm also, I could not see spam a lot this weekend, but I heard everyone raving about it, so, you know, the contribution of theater to our education is definitely valued by the community and valued by the students, so thank you, everyone, for coming and speaking. And next on our, on our agenda, we have a bunch of fantastic students from the high school to talk about restorative justice.
I'm gonna consent to the agenda first.
Oh, yeah, that we could do that first.
I'll move, we approve the consent.
I'll second. I think Kiana wants to take some bit off.
Could we pull the superintendent's progress check, because we're talking about it later on?
Sure. So I think we need to revise the motion.
Move, that we approve the consent agenda minus the progress check.
I'll second. I'll support.
Hi.
Are you opposed? Great. Now, we have post-Philippine argument about restorative justice, so...
So I would like to introduce Lindsay Hellman, who, just to put everybody, everything out there, she is a good friend of mine. Our daughter's in the second grade, or, sorry, third grade together. She's actually at my house this weekend. Exactly. So Lindsay is here, she works for, she works a lot with restorative justice, so when the board asked for training around this, she was the person I called. And she's worked with our fine students here, so she brought a bunch here. So Lindsay, take over.
Yeah. So this is gonna be a collaborative presentation, which has related to knowledge right here and the wisdom's right here. And so, let's start with this question, right? So, just like Libby said, my name is Lindsay Hellman, I am currently the program director and up for learning moving into the executive director role in January. And I also am the coordinator of the Vermont Restorative Approaches Collaborative, which is a group of 40-plus trainers, community justice center folks, educators, who are working with schools across the state with support from the AOE, a contractor we have, the AOE, to support schools in moving towards a restorative approach. So, and you'll be learning more about that this evening.
I'm Kaye Ellingson, ninth grade.
I'm Ella Darcy, ninth grade.
I'm Mary Ann Songhurst, and I'm in 12th grade.
I'm Tracy Zessary, I'm a senior.
I'm Micah Bonberg, I'm also a senior.
Hi, good evening, I'm Melissa Noss, I'm one of the school counselors here at the high school. And I met Lindsay when I took her course last year, and I got interested in restorative practices and learned most of what I know about it through her course.
And I'm Allye Coolman, she here. I am the social worker at Main Street Middle School.
Okay, so before we start this presentation, we just wanna take a second to recognize that restorative practices has been around for centuries. In fact, we can't take full credit for it, it was actually developed from indigenous practices, so we just gotta recognize and realize that first. And then, and kind of honor that too. Restorative practices is kind of an alternative practice of discipline, and we see it kind of as a transformative and repairing way to, like, deal with, like, repairing harm or damage to our school community. The approach is not just a program, but we must learn how to naturalize it into our system from foundation up. And it incorporates justice in all forms and positive change into institutions everywhere. And our quote is, "Restoring justice is a compass, not a map."
Okay, so, when we think about restorative practices, we tend to say restorative practices when it comes to school communities, restorative justice is oftentimes more referred to when we're talking about community justice, right? So in general, we're gonna talk into the umbrella term of restorative practices. It really relies heavily upon relational kind of ecology, so how groups of people relate to one another within an environment, so in this case, within our school environment. So, schools that have a strong relational, relational ecology have a primary focus on relationships. And one of the things that we know about education, right, is that relationships build a really strong foundation for deep and real learning, and experiences that stick with people as they grow through life. The strong trust between students, teachers, administrators, community members is a foundational piece of restorative practices, and I would venture to say also a piece that Montpelier-Roxbury Public Schools really values. It offers time and space to be heard, right? So, a community that values the things that restorative practices values really offers that, which is something that I think oftentimes, especially in places like schools where hierarchies are a natural thing that are formed, time and space to be heard for youth is something that we don't always see in places like that. The shared power, especially allowing students the ability and the role in problem-solving and change-making is incredibly key to this, and you can see that, you'll see as we continue on, that the youth are gonna speak a lot more than the adults here, and that's hugely important to us. And then, last but certainly not least, I think kind of the overarching thing to remember here tonight is that there's a strong focus on social justice and equity, right? When people, especially youth, get what they need, right, we see them grow and blossom a lot more than when we prescribe the same thing for every kid. So I'm gonna turn the mic over.
So, when we talk about restorative practices, we wanna think about that there are three pillars. And the first pillar is that we are building and maintaining healthy relationships built between students and students, and teachers and students. The second one is making sure that we are equitable for learning times, especially the curriculum and the environment in the school. And the third one is repairing harm and transforming conflict. And restorative practices brings better people to understand why conflict occurs and why it should happen. Okay, so basically going off of that, there's a couple of things that kind of we need for our sort of school to work. So the first thing, that people can develop a sense of belonging, I think that really speaks to the kind of community aspect of restorative practices. If everyone is kind of being engaged in the learning environment and circles, restorative practices will really be a lot more effective. And kind of along with that is the culture that we have to develop, where everyone is able to kind of appreciate others and their intrinsic worth. So that's also kind of up with the community thing. I think that everyone needs to be able to respect each other for this to, this system to really take off. And also, there's the part about the interpersonal relationships that kind of come with this, so to really have a good community for this to work in, you need to have a place where people are really able to communicate. place where people are really able to connect with one another. And that's, um, I think that's really important. And along that, um, every, with restorative practices, every student gets to add their voice. So there, I know a lot of people who get kind of marginalized in high school. And this is just kind of their opportunity to have everyone on a level playing field. Everyone can kind of, uh, say what they want to say, even if they wouldn't get that opportunity otherwise.
So at its core, it's, uh, really about the paradigm shift in how we do things in schools. I think in, like many of our systems in our society and organizations, things are done to and for people, but in a restorative practice or in a restorative approach, it's done with one another. And shouldn't that be the purpose of school, to be in relationship with one another so that we can be deeply engaged and, um, and successful? So, um, this might, I don't know how familiar you all are with the, um, multi-tiered system of support, MTSS. So when we look at restorative practices and the restorative approach in school, it's, it's like you can put this on top of that. And at the bottom, the foundation of that is the universal supports, what everyone receives in a school community. And without that, that, that strong community, time to build relationships and build that capacity through, and you can see in that box on the side, who have provided different pieces that are already in place in your school system or, you know, are focused in many of our systems. If we don't have that foundation, then moving into the next tiers is not going to be as successful. So taking time to focus on the universal tier one support is essential. And it really gets at the width of restorative practices. I heard mentioned earlier of social emotional learning, and I know that's a focus, um, and for your district. And so that's, that's one of those pieces. So it's looking at the things that are already in place and recognizing, hey, we're already doing a lot of the restorative practice work. How do we just think about it in a different way? So it's a change of mental models. At the same time, in tier one, it's, there's a different way to respond when, when harm is done within a school system in regards to relationships and, and how, um, relationships are repaired, um, in, in a restorative approach. So that's, I think we're going to get into that a little bit further along, but that might be through a different way to think about when something occurs, what are the, what's the language that is used, the restorative language and questions? And how are folks held accountable for their, for their behavior in a way that is, um, that allows them to not be shamed, but, um, re-enter into their community in a supportive way? As you move further up, just like, you know, in a tier two support, those are like when you have intervention. So this is maybe when there's been harm done, what does that look like in a restorative model? So that might be a restorative circle, a conference or peer mediation. So instead of, and we'll get to the why later on, but instead of pushing out and removing kids from a, a classroom, it's bringing them back in. Um, and then finally, if there is, um, situations where harm is done and, and, uh, folks need to take time away from school, how do we welcome them back into a school community and have a process that truly reintegrates them and they understand what supports they have, but they're also held accountable for their actions? So same sort of, um, same structure as the MTSS structure, um, but without that foundational piece of, I bet if you went down that list, you could say, check, check, we're doing a lot of that already in our school system. Without those pieces and spending more time and focus and energy on those, arts integration could be one of those, um, you're not going to be able to really think about how to resolve conflict in a different way.
I was a ninth grader, so last year I was an eighth grader. And I was the oldest grade to take part in the MSMS, the middle schools, um, approach on restorative circles. Last year we, um, go back. Last year we took part in like community based groups and our TAs are, are, you know, 20 minutes in the morning where we talked. And then the idea was to build a community, like a sense of community and.
Each TA was given like a specific format for the circle. And they didn't take any student input in making those questions or thinking about what maybe we'd like to talk about. And I think that was kind of what ruined it for us. And it would have been a better, um, experience if they had taken our input. My TA did later in the year after we started, um, came up with their own questions that interested us. And that made it a lot more enjoyable and we wanted to participate in it.
Yeah. If it was done to us, or if it was done, yeah, with us instead of to us, um, as like having our own questions, being like taking our input, I think it would have gone smoother because I remember when I would get done with these Friday circles, I was like just lamenting it because I was, we were given these questions that really had no, there was no reason for us to want to care about them. And if we did this correctly, it would bring a sense of like caring about everyone and everything around us.
So I'll just quickly talk a little bit about, um, the middle school's journey thus far from the adult perspective. Two summers ago, a team from the middle school attended the BEST Institute, um, focusing specifically on restorative practices. As I think many of you know, the BEST Institute has kind of a track for, um, MTSS stuff and then a track for restorative practices stuff. We went to the restorative side and we essentially came up with a three to five year implementation plan where we were attempting to do some, um, kind of community building first. We, the, one of the main things we really got from John Kidda's presentation, um, over the, the four days was that, uh, building the community, building that tier one, um, kind of part of the triangle, uh, is foundational, obviously, um, to, to be able to, to really build a restorative practice within a, within a school community. So, um, some of the things that we had, um, been planning to focus on over the first few years was implementing an extended TA on Fridays to do restorative circles. We continue to do that this year. There was a committee that met, a committee of teachers and, um, the plan was to include students this year. It's kind of fallen apart, to be perfectly frank. That was, they were meeting, um, we were meeting every week, um, last school year. And, um, the hope is to be able to kind of use some restorative conferencing, the tier two and tier three, um, within our discipline system. I think that right now that is kind of where the plan stands. I'll just say, and we'll get to this a little bit later, that, um, it becomes really difficult when it's, when it's just like a couple of, a few teachers or a few, a few people really interested in this and it's not kind of a, a systems wide, um, approach. So we'll get to that though in a little bit.
And I'm going to explain what we've been doing at the high school with restorative practices. So last year I had a half sabbatical because I had a role in fellowship and I was researching and learning all about how to bring more wellness practice and intentional focus on that for our students. Both from a mental health perspective, but also a community, social, relational perspective. And I came across through a workshop with John Kidda, restorative practices, knowing nothing about it. And that's how I learned about Lindsay inside of her class. And the, the big emphasis in her class is to use adult partnerships so that we're not doing to what you're doing with. That's how these students got involved. Simultaneously, my colleague, Aaliyah Cohen, who could be here tonight because she's not feeling well, but she also is getting interested and excited about this. And she went in a different direction, um, we have since aligned our efforts, but what she was doing was she contacted a woman named Bianca who works for, um, it's a, it's a collaboration between DCF and Washington County Diversion Program. And they got a grant or something to go out to schools to educate them about how restorative practices work and what they are. And so Bianca came and she trained our faculty. She came three times, if I remember correctly. Once just to give a broad overview, kind of like explaining this and what the different elements of restorative practices are. And then the next two times, she worked with faculty members who were particularly jazzed about the subject and trained us to lead circles. And so in two separate faculty meetings, two or three, I can't remember, um, we led circles with our faculty. And the, the first two were, the focus was on community building. The third one, we actually used circle discussion to, uh, to deliberate about a pretty big question that we were all focused on. It had to do with cellphone use and what were, what direction were we going to take with that within the high school? So that was our experience with circles last year. That pretty much sums it up. That's the last piece for that one?
I thought we were going to talk about the little, um,
Oh, yeah.
Uh, playing room and. So Lisa invited me and a couple of other students to come to four full day conferences with Lindsay where we learned about restorative practices and youth adult partnerships. And then presented to the MHS teachers, uh, who wanted me to give about restorative practices and circles and how we should implement them into our school. And then we met at the playing room about effective language, which is language that makes sure that when there's conflict, it's not accused to a tone and no one feels like they're being attacked or accused.
So that was, um, the what? And now we want to talk about the why. So, um, this is not, as you saw in that first slide that Mary Ann shared, um, that it's not an initiative or a program and it's not like the next fad. Um, I think that this surge of interest nationally, globally and in Vermont is in response to, um, what we're seeing in schools and the needs of our young people in regards to social emotional health and wellbeing and learning and, um, and quite frankly, the disciplinary data around suspensions and expulsions. So, um, Vermont actually in 2016, um, passed H95, which asked the AOE to explore the use of restorative practices regarding school climate and culture, truancy, bullying and harassment, school discipline. So it's been recommended to all schools, school districts, SEUs to consider a restorative approach before any kind of exclusionary discipline practice. With that, there's been a huge amount of, um, learning and interest and collaboration in Vermont. Like I said, there's this Vermont Restorative Approaches Collaborative. We're supporting schools across the entire state, um, that are looking at how to, that are exploring restorative practices and a restorative approach and then looking at implementation, which we know according to implementation science and lessons learned along the way, that takes a good three to five years to truly be a restorative school. And to shift practices, it's practices and procedures. It's also curriculum and pedagogy and every level. So it's not just about discipline. It's about really exploring what it means to be a restorative, um, school and environment. And so this really came out of this response to the zero, um, zero tolerance policies, which we know have not really helped, um, helped our young people at all. In fact, as, um, Mary Ann will share in just a moment, created what I'm sure you've heard, the school to prison pipeline. And so maybe that, that's all. I'll turn it over to you now. Your hearing.
So last February, I got the chance to go attend a workshop with Lindsay. It was in Holyoke, Massachusetts. And we got the chance to learn from the Palante Restorative Justice Program. And there, it's basically a youth-led program. It was really awesome. And they had a lot of community of support. And it was primarily made up of students of color, specifically like the Hispanic students who may have a majority in the school district. It was also founded on youth power and youth voice. So it was completely youth-led. I'll reiterate that again and again. And it was really awesome to see that they had completely, um, changed how the institution handles systemic discipline and had basically transformed and reformed the system altogether. And their school and prison pipeline system, like with suspensions and expulsions before this program became like full on implemented, it was pretty high. And they've managed to decrease the amount of students who get stuck in that, um, cycling system. And it was really cool because these students, um, are paid to be part of this program group and they undergo extensive training and they organize events like this where they get a lot of people from all throughout northern states to come see and observe their workshops and how they are able to do this. So I thought that was pretty cool because it showed it wasn't just Vermont who was interested in this. It was also another state pretty close to us, Massachusetts. And it's also a national thing too.
And then also the reasons why we should contain restorative practices and pay more attention to it at our schools is because it reduces hierarchy and it shows respect for everyone. And it could be helpful with building relationships between students and students and students and teachers and make a more respectful environment and inclusive environment overall.
And then finally, just to give you a little more reason why we think it's a good idea. Restorative approaches have been linked in amongst other schools that are using them to, uh, then Mary Ann touched on this in her experience at Palante, but reduce suspensions and expulsions, behavior referrals, racial disparities and exclusionary discipline. It's been linked to teacher satisfaction and reduced turnover in their jobs. Students have identified increased academic performance and social emotional capacity. And that's a big focus in the district right now. Generally improved climate and culture, reduced absenteeism and tardiness, and an overall parental satisfaction increase.
Future correction. So one of the things this group discussed a lot in our course that we took last year together, um, as well as in our meetings this year, is just integrating restorative practices into staff development district-wide. Something that we all feel really strongly about and kind of the research shows is that when an effort is made K-12, um, students know what to expect. They feel a part of the community from beginning to end. If we, if we can find a way to, um, train staff in a really meaningful way, we also believe that they will feel a lot more comfortable in like really diving into this with students. Part of the, the struggle right now, I think we've found is that, um, it's, it's hard to put yourself out there and to feel a little bit vulnerable in these, in these moments. And that's what's so important for, for adults to model, how to do if we're, if we're expecting kids to be able to, um, increase their kind of social emotional literacy. So K-12.
I just wanted to like re-say, reiterate that I think the most important thing is having the students and the teachers together with this. A biggest thing was last year, this, that wasn't there. It was just something that they were doing to us. This needs to be something that is like a whole school, every person who steps in the doors each day needs to be a part of it.
And again, what Ally said, um, if the staff isn't on board with it, it's going to reflect back on the students' view of it. And that's really important. Also, we need to focus on tier one, which is building community and connections before we can move on to anything else because having the foundation is the most important part of this whole sort of practices. And so the point we really want to make sure resonates with you is that this is not just some phase that the school is going through. This is something that was really lost and we really believe we'll make the community a better place.
And we welcome any questions you may have.
Yeah, thank you very much. That was excellent. Questions? Bridgette?
A couple of you talked a little bit about your experiences at the middle school, but what's that experience like for students at the high school, restorative practices? It sounded more like the faculty is working on it. I was wondering what the students are experiencing.
Do you want to answer that and then I'll.
We don't really do a lot, to be honest. We try to have sometimes some TA on something, but it's really, we don't have anything that's what's wrong. And except in, in the planning room, it's more parent, you know, Jen and Lucy and that has a really good job of being caring and making sure that they are not disdisciplined. But as an employee, there's not much of a change.
And we agree with that. And add that it's just in the infancy stages of, we, the faculty are just learning about it. And so we have not fully implemented it into the students' regular day. But that's why we're getting students involved to get their input on where they can imagine that happening. You know, I have my ideas, but I want to know where they think it would fit. So we're just getting started with that.
I think there was one instance, I think there was one instance last year of a tier two circle that happened when there was a disciplinary issue in that health room. I don't remember the specifics, but it, what I'm trying to say is that it has existed here before. And I think that could definitely take off easily.
You reminded me of another thing. So earlier in the year, we were asked to address our students' PLP goals. So earlier in the year, we were asked to address our students' P L P goals. So everybody has a T A off the faculty. And you're all familiar with what T A is, the Teacher Advisory Group. Okay. So within T A, we were given an array of options of how we wanted to check in with our students about how they were, the progress they're making toward their goals. And one of the options was you could do it as a circle. And different faculty members had different levels of comfort with that. And just anecdotally, in my T A, surprise, we did a circle. And I will tell you the difference, we already had a pretty tight-knit T A, but the difference between the feel of my T A from the day before we did a circle to the day after, and even they commented on it saying like, wow, that was really cool and I wasn't so sure I wanted to share my goal with everybody, but I did and it was fine. And it really was, it was a moving T A session, at least in my experience. Oh, and then the one with ideas we shouldn't have.
Yeah, well, yeah, so, yeah, I think I had stated before that of course it takes time to completely change, you know, because it is a paradigm change for our system. And I was thinking just from my own personal experience, I was an educator in Essex for 15 years. And we went through our whole school restorative approach, but it was very grassroots. And we know that when there's a few people that are really passionate about something and then those few people might leave to go elsewhere, what happens is it's not systemic. So you haven't really created that foundation, there's only pockets. And what I'm hearing and what I know from working with this team is that there's pockets because there are people that have interest in it. What I would say is that, as Alyssa stated, that, or maybe what Ally's saying, what's nice with the future is that it's really important that everyone has a foundation, the what and the why, what are restorative. And once they realize that there's already so many things in their toolbox that are restorative, like so in our work, we always start with like, well, what are the strengths, what are the things that are already happening? Those are restorative approaches. But how are we going to be more intentional about making sure that happens, not just in T A, but that is a place to do it, sitting in a circle. But how are we going to look at curriculum choices? Like where do youth have a voice in their curriculum, in their learning, in school discipline approaches? It has to be done in partnership and with youth at the table. And all people need to be involved in the work. So I've done a lot of trainings this year with, which is not really the work of our organization up for learning is youth adult partnership, but I have done some work with some schools that are whole, every adult that works in that system being trained in what it is and why. So that's everyone from the cafeteria staff to the custodial staff, to the administrative staff, to teaching staff, to support staff, coming together. It really needs to be systemic and then it does take time. So we always look at year one as an exploration year, really getting our feet wet, learning about it, digging in a little bit, trying things out. And then the next couple of years are around like partial implementation and then really three to five, like any change can occur in our organization, it takes a good three to five years. So it does take time and I think it's a worthwhile investment. I know it's a worthwhile investment, I've seen the success in many places. There are schools that are close by, there's many schools in Vermont that are digging into this work all over the state and then nationally as well. But it does take time and it really does take buy-in. I mean, that's a huge piece of it, is that there needs to be buy-in and to build capacity.
Just wanted to give a couple more things that are happening at the Main Street Middle School. There are a number of teachers who do feel really interested and invested in this kind of way of being as an educator. And so a good number of teachers have used circles in academic settings. I think it's really important to note that the idea of student voice, obviously, we know can be used in more places than just disciplinary settings or community building settings. So academic circles are something that a lot of teachers use. I know that Lindsay used them when she was a teacher. There have been teachers from five to eight in the Main Street Middle School who use them as reflective kind of exercises after a unit, a warm-up during a unit. There's a number of academic ways to use them. I can tell you that just as a social worker, shack of shacks, I've used a lot of circles in my work. But also there have been a few kind of bigger kind of group harm situations that have occurred in the middle school and we've come together in a circle to kind of address it. And the feedback I get from students is that that's the first time that anyone's like asked me to share with a group of people how I felt after something terrible happened to me, rather than just sharing it with the assistant principal or with the teacher or, you know, with one person, with one adult. Being, students being heard when they've been harmed is incredibly empowering. The other thing that I'll just mention quickly is that I kind of put together and helped to facilitate this county-wide restorative practices PLC, so professional learning community. So it's district-wide, so we have a number, we've got like five or six schools that come together once a month and we discuss kind of like where we are in the journey and we problem solve together. So there are a number of schools in Washington County and all over Vermont, but specifically in Washington County who are really working hard towards this. And I think we have a much larger community that we can draw from and learn from.
I have a question. First of all, thank you all, really dynamic and effective and collaborative way to convey a message, very powerful. Question is for you, Libby, so not to put you on the spot, but to put you on the spot. So are there any plans in place at the administrative level to help facilitate the expansion of these practices?
Yeah, so Mary touched on it when she presented to you all a month ago, two board meetings ago, in the sense of we have to get our ducks in a row first in terms of we need a SEL district-wide group so we can be other administrative team just last week to put together who we want on that team. Hidden principals are now touching people's shoulders to say, hey, you're going to be on this, we have meeting dates set and that kind of thing, now we're gathering the team run by Mary. That team will be responsible for coming up with a common data system, coming up with a common understanding of what we mean when we say SEL learning, common understanding of what our K-12 vertical articulated curriculum is around that. And then working towards, this is the recommendation we're making district-wide for the work to be done. So we have some pieces to put in place prior to jumping the ball hog. I think Alyssa and Ally and certainly Lindsay from her statewide perspective hit on the part that we have, we have some adults in our system who are interested in this work, we do not have all adults who are interested in this work. And so we have a lot of work to do around what is it that we truly need? What does tier one look like? What are we expecting our kids to know and be able to do prior to some of this? Which connects to exactly what Lindsay was saying, you know, she says, what are you doing now? That's restorative work, it's just naming it.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Drive safe.
Excellent. That was students and us.
I don't think so.
I don't think so, I think we're, is it?
No, I don't think he is, he just says.
Did you already present?
No.
Did this consume a bunch of time?
So we have with us tonight two, Alyssa, two student representatives who are going to be with us for the school year. You all know Hope, who just got into Columbia.
Yes. Thank you.
It's like deja vu all over again.
I know. I just heard that. Yeah, I did get into Columbia. Thank you. Have a safe trip.
You have Columbia seat on the board.
And we'd like to welcome Eve Taylor, and he was a junior at Hunter High School. And so the idea, we wanted to try to get at the beginning, but Miss Hope is a little busy, is to have a senior and a junior on the board so then the senior can mentor the junior and the junior can mentor the senior. Or switch it up next, you know what I mean? So I'm not sure, did you all plan something to talk about or we met the other day, but I wasn't sure. Okay, go for it.
So I understand that the consent agenda and public comment and first part of learning focus is taking up some time, so I don't want to take up much more time. But we do have a pretty short just structure, student celebrations and then student concerns, needs, and perspectives. So it's similar to last year. And then in terms of student celebrations, which is what we'll start off with, the marking period has just begun, but we're about to go off for break and so there's sort of a little bit of a lull and some seniors, me, are hearing back about college, some are applying and the juniors are prepping for second semester junior year, which is a busy time with standardized testing and AP classes in general. So that's happening. And in preparation for winter holiday break, student council is holding an ugly sweater contest this Friday. Winter sports have started.
Yeah, so Grease auditions have happened for our spring musical and it's one of the largest ensembles that the Masked Theater Program has had in the high school. So it's great to see that more students are getting interested in being involved in the arts program. Club and Tract is holding a Toy Joy Drive in order to get more connected with the community. It's basically just, we have shoeboxes and we're filling it with items for Heaton Woods, Westview Meadows, and families involved with the Meals on Wheels program. And yeah, do you want to talk about the concerns?
Yeah, so just to add on to celebrations, Winter Ball just happened and that raises money for Project Grad. The French class is fundraising for their spring trip to Montreal in Quebec. And they did so by selling, making and selling crepes at the Garage Cultural Center, which is this new cool spot in town. And other MHS faculty and staff were part of the, I think it was centered around bees, there was this kind of craft fair. So it was a whole community effort. And then the middle school play just happened and as we've heard from some parents, it was a huge success. And then in terms of student concerns and needs and student perspectives, this continues from last year, just the idea of like what are our continued efforts to support diversity and inclusion in MRPS schools. And I think that it relates to what we've heard tonight about restorative practices and that's something that Emma and I bumped a lot last year, just in terms of knowing that we already have some tenants of restorative practices in our community already and I think that's what makes it so dynamic and special. And I think that as a relatively smaller set of schools, we have the privilege of having the opportunity to have a sense of community that large schools, especially in big cities, don't necessarily have. And it's an opportunity that we can make the most of. And part of the reason why restorative practices haven't been as developed in the high school is because when presenting a sort of initiative that changes the way that schools work and changes the way that relationships are formed and held between students and teachers, it's often good to get first, good first impressions, otherwise community members will sort of withdraw and then not want to reengage. So I think that it's, especially in other communities, like U32's tried it and what's, what experience has shown is that spending time developing and working on tiers for the first year and the second year and the third year and so on and so forth is really, really pivotal to ensuring that restorative practices are successful. But I think that like part of what has helped me feel so dedicated to my community and part of like why I serve on the board and why I'm so involved in the community is because I feel, I just feel connected to it essentially. And I think that that restorative practices can help ensure that more students feel connected to their school environments because we spend like six hours a day here and some less, some more, but we spend a huge amount of our time at school and so a huge, it's a huge part of our lives. And so it would be a really positive for us if students felt even more connected and even more happy here and didn't be their teachers just as authority figures or distant people trying to like impose something on them, but as friends and confidants and supporters. And let's see, with the equity policy and the equity specialist and the district-wide equity committee, I am a member of the Racial Justice Alliance and we are happy that there's an open position for a student member on that committee, just because it's important to get student voice in all areas of decision-making and it'll help make better policy. And I think especially with something like equity, it's really important to hear student perspective. So it's also just a chance to uphold a sense of transparency with students and the student body about what the committee is working on and how the policy is being implemented. And Earth Group is in the process of meeting with administration and I know they're going to be in touch with the school board and Libby in the coming weeks, especially after we get back from break, for this project that, I can say we because I'm part of Earth Group, that we've developed. And it is the idea of a food forest in the mudlot because something that, it's basically an initiative to mitigate stormwater runoff into the Winuski, which is a problem and it's already a problem because of agriculture near the river and near the river valley. And it would be basically shrubbery and berry bushes and fruit and nut trees, as well as a place for students to hang out. There would be pathways and benches. And there's also obviously the concern about keeping the fire lane open and obviously we would, that would be in the design of it. But it's essentially to make sure that stormwater runoff doesn't go into the Winuski River along with a lot of the, like, I don't know how to explain it, but like from cars and a lot of the like debris and pollution and litter doesn't go into the river. And also just a chance to have a beautiful space for students and a chance to grow food for the cafeteria. So I know that students are meeting with Renee Devore and they're going to, Hope, to present to the school board in the next few weeks about it. That's pretty much it, but we're here to answer questions you may have and obviously in the next few months about proficiency-based learning and behavior and class sizes and anything like that. So we're here, we're here for you.
Glad you're back.
Yeah, no, thanks, I'm very excited to have you for the rest of the year.
Thank you.
We appreciate the commitment too. Questions for Hope and Eve? Great, thanks. Budget. Fun stuff.
Well, this might actually have a chance to get it right back on stage because there's not much to keep me up there. If you could just take one and pass them to the middle, please. So instead of showing slides, I just wanted to put something together real quick to serve as a quick update. The first bullet talks about follow-up items, so at the last budget presentation, I was asked to compare actual tax rates to the tax rates that we showed during town or informational hearings to see what the differences are. And I was also asked to look at the enrollment projection for FY20 versus what the enrollment actually was for FY20. So if you turn to the second page, that's the follow-up piece. So that first section is talking about, I didn't leave Roxbury off for any other reason other than there was no change between the tax rate that was presented on information hearing and the vote because of the 5% limitation. So I just focused on mock pilliard. So what you see is last year, the actual tax rate was actually about 0.3 cents higher than the informational hearing. But that was an anomaly. The year before that, the voters basically passed a budget that was six and a half cents higher in the tax rate than what the actual tax rate ended up at. The year before that, it was 4.7 cents higher than what the actual rate was. So that's just a little bit of a snapshot of how things go because there's a tax commissioner recommendation on things like dollar yield early in the process. And by the time everything sugars off and the legislature sets the dollar yield, it can be dramatically different. Then the enrollment projection versus actuals, so you can see that going, the columns across K through 12, and then the projection, what it was, the actual enrollment, the difference, and then I did the difference by grade cluster. And so what jumped out at me obviously was the kindergarten number being so dramatically off. And then I realized what, I went back to the formulas and realized it was pulling from four years ago's birth data instead of five years ago. four years ago's birth data instead of five years ago. If I had done it correctly, that number would have been 66 instead of 88. Huge difference in birth data from one year to the next. The other thing that jumps out is grade 12, looks like that was off dramatically. But as I looked at the formulas there, for the past at least four years, we've dropped kids from 11th to 12th grade every year. If there were 80 kids the next year in 11th grade, the next year there'd only be 76 in 12th grade. Not sure what that outmigration is, but we usually drop kids from 11th to 12th. This past year, we actually picked up six. So instead of a typical loss of six or seven, we picked up six. So that's why that was there. So the kind of good news is the only place I found any kind of error in the formula was in kindergarten. So if you turn the page again, this is the new enrollment projection slide. So you could compare this to the budget presentation on the fourth to see the difference. What you really see is in the 2021 column for kindergarten, that number was 73, now it's 71. And then you'll see that kind of water flow, waterfall down. In FY '21, '22, it's kindergarten and first, it's a little bit different. And then it's kindergarten first, second, kindergarten first, second, third. So those first, that first kind of triangle in the upper right-hand corner are the numbers that are a little bit lower on this chart than they were. The bottom line totals, we still are seeing increasing enrollment all the way through 22, '23, but it's just not as high. Like the number I think used to be in 22, '23, the total K-12, I think was 1165, now it's 1150. So it's not as high, but it is still increasing. So that slide will now be part of the budget presentation, this updated enrollment slide. But if you go back to the first page now, changes since December 4th. What I usually tell you is anything that I've changed in the budget from one budget presentation to the next, there's not a lot. Tax factors, the only thing we know now is the non-residential base rate. And that's got to still be set by law, but at least we have a good guess. We do have the dollar yield recommendation, but I'm not using it yet because of that, that swing that we sometimes see through the legislative process. Enrollment projections, obviously I changed those and we just talked about that. No changes on revenues, no significant changes in revenues. But on the expense side, you'll see there, it's highlighted, there was a $0 net change. There were several places where I could collect in some savings, but Mary Lundine let Libby and I know that she's now got some new information about some kids that are coming into district that we're going to have to worry about for potential outside placement costs. So instead of reducing the budget, I put that money in the last line for special ed outside placements to make sure that we don't end up with a deficit. I also had to cover the lacrosse coach that we added. And then personnel changes, it's hard to explain this, but this year, if we had somebody shift positions, it may have led to a difference in what I budgeted for what they come in at. Like for example, if I had a custodian that was part-time that's now filling a full-time job, I may have budgeted less money for that full-time job and now I'm having to pay that higher rate. So because of the few changes like that in personnel, in FY '20, that kind of pushes over into FY '21. So I had to create a little bit of extra money there. A through E are just places where I was able to reduce the budget some. The school resource officer, as you know, we have a new one. So there's a new higher savings in essence that gets passed along to us from the city. Dental vision, I had assumed that we were going to have a small rate increase for dental vision. Turns out both rates are level. So unlike health, both rates were level. So whenever I rolled that in, we had a little bit of savings there. Statewide health negotiations, I know in some districts it's a big expense. For us, whenever we actually roll it in, it actually is a reduction from what we had originally budgeted. Grandparented tuition for Roxbury High School students, I had a placeholder for about a half of a student in case we had like somebody who was a tech student switch from tech to regular high school, because then I would have to pay regular high school tuition. But we just don't have the flexibility to budget for a bunch of contingencies. So I just took that out. High school testing materials, this was actually kind of an oversight on my part. We increased that to allow for AP tests to be paid for by the district. We intended for that only to be for us to pay for AP tests for kids on free and reduced lunch, because we don't have a high percentage of FRO kids taking these tests. So this was kind of a, to help alleviate that. That amount of money is way less than if we were paying for all AP tests. So that's why that reduction is there. So there's a reduction of about $52,000, but I realigned it into those other areas for now. The next section, still unknowns, equalized pupil count. We did get a first draft of equalized pupils, but our numbers are definitely not right. So we still are on hold for that. Common level of appraisal, I think Libby mentioned last year we got it December 24th. I haven't seen it yet, but it should be soon. Special ed revenues should be out, should have been out on the 15th, but those are big things that hopefully will get between now and January 8th and we have a full, full-fledged budget update. So I guess my question is, as I learn some of these unknowns and roll them in, my question to the board is listed under discussion, do you have any kind of target you want me to try to hit or you want us to try to hit? Right now, spending for pupil is an increase of 4.36%. Our education spending is an increase of 4.77 now, I think. The residential tax rate for Montpelier's gone up 5.34%, which is 8.8 cents, I think. So if there's any of these, those kinds of, any targets that you have in mind for any of those areas, I can try to keep that in mind. I won't promise because if the factors go the wrong direction, there's just no way that we're going to hit them. But if there is an idea that, hey, we want spending for pupil only to be an increase of 4%, something like that, then we can keep that in mind whenever we crunch through it between now and January 8th. Any thoughts?
My general thought is that these outstanding items are really very large unknowns that could sway things pretty drastically one way or another. And I feel like if my own, this is just me speaking, the way that I see it is if we make a decision now and then it swings in a positive direction and we've made, you know, a decision, we're trying to stick to a certain line, it's kind of arbitrary at that point. Whereas when we have more information and we know what the liability will look like for Montpelier taxpayers, I feel like we'll be able to make more informed decisions. We know what's being added and I don't think, you know, we necessarily will need.
Well, I mean unfortunately, we're kind of persistently in this position of, you know, these three big factors from the state don't come in at time. So, yeah. We're generally, we're generally stuck with the situation where we have to make estimates and, you know, Grant, I think does a very good job of being conservative on those estimates so that we don't have, we've generally been surprised, not too wildly and more often than not, positively. Michelle?
The AOE in the, by statute is required to give us the equalized pupil number by December 1st.
I believe it is December 1st, yeah.
And that hasn't been happening.
No, but they would be quick to say, there's, there's fingers pointing every direction here. Last year was the first year with that new Vermont statewide data management system, SDVMS or something like that.
SLDS.
SLDS, mine is SST. SLDS. So there was a lot of problems with the AOE being able to get data from all the districts and supervisor units. So we would say it's because the system was bad. AOE would say it's because we didn't get the data in time. I would say that same argument pertains this year. We would still say there's problems with the system that makes it very difficult to get our information in. But the AOE would say we can't give you data unless we have your data. So we're still in the same place we were last year.
And what's the AOE doing to fix it?
Let's talk about that off camera.
Well, I ask because you may remember that now representing our region on the BSBA board and someone from a different district has raised this complaint and so we're sort of weighing how.
I am there with you, Michelle. This year, I'm trying to say this in a good way.
Politically.
Yes, thank you. This year is not necessarily the AOE's fault from our perspective. And other districts, yes, it is. I'll blame the AOE.
Montpelier, Roxbury was not speaking.
Because of a change in the data management position and because of some decisions that were made prior to the new data management and technology director being in their position that was unknowns to us, we, our power school wasn't updated. And because of, and when we tried, our new data manager, when he tried to update it, it would look like it was updated and then it would revert back to like power school three. And because it had been told to do that by former employees. So we couldn't figure out why. So we hired.
We had our own technology problems.
Yes. So we hired an outside consultant to fix that for us. However, he just uncovered this because it was so deep in power school. And so we, he is, we're paying a lot of money for him to fix our system. And so this one is on us. But yes, the rollout was awful. No, there's not a lot of support at the AOE for this rollout. Yeah, our system kind of stakes. However, this one's on us completely. So we're in a little bit of a weird predicament around that right now.
Yeah, but Fed revenues, I think are supposed to also be provided by, I don't know if it's statutory, but by December 15th. I know that one of the reasons why you weren't voting on announced tuition is because one of the factors I use is the allowable tuition from last year to kind of gauge where we are. We don't have the allowable tuition from last year yet. Once again, that should, that is by statute, I think that we're supposed to have that by now. And that would be another one where people are pointing both directions. I'm pointing at the AOE because my data's in, why can't I get my, my allowable tuition? The AOE is pointing back saying, yeah, well, yours is, but not everybody else's is. And so we can't crunch the numbers. So there's a few things like that. Yeah, I would say last year, the equalized pupil thing was probably more on them. This year is probably more on us.
Specifically us, not, not districts in general.
There's a few bad issues, but we're in the minority there. I've got no problem with, you know, not having a target. I just wanted to make sure that I was sensitive to that if you had one. I know that this year, it is a big ask. I mean, there are positions that aren't, that aren't nice to have, they're must-haves. You know, classroom teacher at the middle school, we have to based on the class sizes. The fact that we don't have a behavior person at the middle school, we have to do that. There's lots of things we'd love to do, but there are unfortunately a lot of things that we have to do, which is already putting us at a higher rate of increase than we typically have. Anyway. Anyone else?
Tina's first. I was just going to say, well, you know that I might say, I certainly don't want it to go up, but I'm with Andrew that I don't, I don't know how you could say anything yet.
Too much unknown. You know, I thought that the first presentation of the budget was, was excellent and we had, we had a good discussion of the things that we would really love to have and are not in the budget. So it's clear that the budget that you presented was designed to address really significant needs in the district and in fact is not addressing everything that we could probably address. So I certainly don't, I'm certainly not suggesting that anyone would go back in and try to cut the budget at this point. We just have to wait and see how the numbers come out.
Well, January 8th, hopefully we have all the pieces we need to be able to make some good decisions there.
I forget the date, when we need to have everything finalized by?
What's that?
When do we have to have everything finalized by for, for the voters?
So January.
January 23rd.
Yeah, it's late January.
Yeah, there's like a 30-day window and I've been.
Well, it's the, before the city council meeting, the second city council meeting in January. Is that still the case or are we so separate from that now that it's not?
Well, we have in our work plan is that the next meeting is the public forum. So Grant will do a larger presentation than the 15th is I have budget approval in our work plan, so.
Is there a, the window there on when it has to be published?
Yeah, actually, I think you may have put that in there, Grant. Budget info meeting, parentheses. This needs to be done, or this needs to be before town meeting day on 3/3/20, probably 3/2.
That's not when it's. I know, you have to get it in the book. You have to get on the.
No, you don't have that in here.
I don't have it, okay. There is a, there is a window of time that the annual reports have to be out. And I know that Montpelier's already asked me about, hey, do you have your audit report for us to put the segment in there about the audit? So I can get back to you on what, what that period is, but it's, it's not so much a period for us because we're dependent on Roxbury having our articles in their, amongst their articles and our information being in the Montpelier annual report. So we're hitting their windows within that window. But I can send you something on what that window of time is.
Could be helpful for us if we have, are faced with difficult decisions.
And Michelle's, it's a good question. I don't think we need to, need to report to the city, but whether.
We didn't last year.
We haven't last year.
So it's just a matter of getting it before it looks.
Yeah, we get our articles to them so that they can put it in there and have the vote and everything, but yeah, it will be just our own information here.
Thanks for all your work on this.
Yeah, any other questions for Grant?
Great, thank you. Have a good night, be safe.
Thanks, Grant, I'm safe.
Superintendent, so is the RSV support staff, data coordinator?
Oh, our VHS support staff strike that from the agenda. I did not get the information I needed from the building leader there, so we're going to strike that right now. It may come back on a different agenda. The MHS data coordinator position, you saw that in the budget for next year. It's the .5 position for guidance support. And talking to the guidance department and Renee here, they have asked if we could put that into the budget now for fund balance because of the SLDS challenges that the person who's doing that role is focusing solely on state data-wide systems and the guidance team needs somebody helping them with scheduling and needs to learn that process from somebody who knows how to do it, which Matt could help with that. So they've asked if we could put that into the budget now so that, or we could have money for it now for the remainder of the school year so they could get somebody in place, train them through the spring and scheduling for next year. Or that's going to be a huge task that I'm not positive right now who would do it and who has the knowledge base to do it. So if we got them in early, Matt could take some of his time to train, to help train somebody in power school and how to do that piece. And then that person could do the scheduling for the following year for our students.
On the nuts and bolts round, do we have any idea what the cost of that is and what, what that is in relation to the fund balance at present?
I believe it's like $15,000 to $20,000. And Grant, Grant is well aware, I should have had him stay, I'm sorry. He's well aware of this and is, believes we have the fund balance to do that.
Okay, Grant. Are we looking to hire a new person or is this filling, having another person who's currently on staff take on this task?
It's to hire a new person, to hire the .5 early, essentially. That is in next year's budget.
Okay. So are we planning to vote on that next time or when, when are we, what's the plan for that?
The budget is all.
The .5.
We don't, we don't have it announced, so we can't approve the fund balance.
Yeah, no, we can't do it right now. We need more information.
Great, come back. You need to run a care, care.
Sorry. You might, as you're running, tell them we need that number.
Yeah. Well, a couple numbers.
Yeah.
We can do the supervision evaluation. Oh, there's great. Oh, he's just telling me, the window to post the budget warning is January 23rd, February 2nd.
Come back.
Wait, did you say it's January 23rd to February 2nd?
Yes.
Okay, so February 2nd is when we have until?
Yes. But the municipal. But the municipalities are usually looking for info at the beginning of the period.
Yeah, they get everything printed and every other town is passing the printer to get their stuff printed.
Actually, an interesting thing that I learned from other school districts is that they finalize their contracts prior to finalizing their budgets.
Such pressure, Michelle.
I never heard of such a thing. Other people are really stressed about it, so.
Do we want to do the, I just told them what we need.
Yeah, let's go to the superintendent evaluation and we'll have to interrupt that program for a second.
I don't really have a presentation for you around the mid-year progress update. I put it, I put it together and give you a chance to ask any questions you want to ask. I'm open to anything.
Questions about the evaluation?
I have, well, a question, but a comment. My first comment is I love the learning focuses. So I learn something every time we... So, thank you for that. I think it's a good, good target to budget and I think it's, I've always thought it's part of the superintendent's job to educate for. Good job. And my other thing has to do with next steps. I was trying to figure out what section this is in. Community public relations section. And I was looking at your next steps and looking at two to say, yep, I'm concerned too about how you get people here, but I think it's important to do. So I don't know what the rest of the board thinks about that. And we've talked before about how do we develop a gauge for... I don't have an answer, just...
I don't know if I would do it five monthly. I think that might be really discouraging.
Right, yeah.
To you, given the superintendent's.
Did your mentor suggest that strategy or are there other superintendents doing that or is that just an idea that...
No, it's just an idea.
We, we did have a series called Soup with the Super. And I think it might have been monthly and parents would come in and meet with the superintendent. And I went to one and I was one of two parents and I'm on the board, so I didn't...
Well, part of what I was thinking is sometimes principals have like principal teas or something, same thing, soup with a principal to get people in. And I know it always takes time. It's a buildup. It's like, you have to persist. But I agree not five monthly.
Yeah.
And principals have a different, there's a different desire for parents to see a principal than to see a superintendent. But, and that's hard for principals. So that's what I, that's why I was saying it would take, I think, working on it. Food's always good.
The pizza.
The number. It could help the events hit Bar Hill. Go for every event I have been there. I used to work for them, so I got any, I'm afraid I get some, some feedback, thank you, some feedback around alcohol and education. Oh, that's not true.
So Grant estimated 60% for the rest of this school year, which is not 10,500.
Okay, so he's, so going back to the previous conversation, it would be 10,500, about 10,500 from our fund balance for the part-time guidance data support.
Coordinator?
Which is 60% of the staff's support.
I'm sorry?
Which is 60%.
It's .5.
It's .5.
Oh, okay. I was going to say. Sorry, Grant. We almost forgot.
And Grant, our current fund balance is what? I think I have, no, I think, I think I have one of our last ones.
I'm thinking it was like just about 1.1, between 1.1 and 1.2 million?
Yeah, like 4.95% of the budget right now.
Then we can probably handle this.
I think that we approved fund balance expenditure of $10,500 higher than the .5 data person to staff the guidance department.
Second. All the better. Aye. Any votes? Great.
So we won't commit the money, like officially committing it like I've come back before, but we'll just use fund balance to cover as we can.
Thanks, Grant.
Thank you, Grant.
Perfect. I highly recommend.
Sure, I will.
Everybody's busy.
Thanks, I'm a need.
I don't know if this scroll will... And how do you track the system for your email inbox? It's through, it's through, I have like 800 things in my inbox. It's the book.
David Allen.
Right now, my inbox has like 15 things in it and it's stressing me out. So it's like, it's like totally changed my inbox productivity. And my tasks and the way Anna and I work together.
Need to consolidate.
I'm seeing, I'm telling you, buddy, we need the book. The book is life-changing.
Which book do you rely on?
This one, The Five Chances for Entrepreneur Productive.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I use David Allen Getting Things Done, his...
Oh, I have that one too.
His email system, that's on me.
Well, maybe that's a good thing to just ask you to comment on because it's one of the hardest things to do.
It is, so one of the big changes I made this year is moving things to a task list in my calendar. So when you have those like 15, you know, oftentimes things don't work out exactly. You finish a task and you have like 15 minutes before a meeting and you don't, you know, you have that time and so it's, it's either go on Facebook, right? Or it drives me straight to what's, what's on the task list that I can accomplish in this period of time, right? And so it helps me check things off where it's like, even if it's just something I need to read that the AOE sent out, I put it on my task list and then I know, you know, like so my task list is a whole lot longer than it used to be, but that's okay because I know that there are things I'm going to accomplish when I have the snippets of time to do it. Like today, the IA or the support staff meeting got canceled from 3:00 to 4:00. So it was immediate, now I can immediately say what's on my task list to get, because I have an hour now, right? That I can accomplish. So that, that has definitely changed. I've color-coded my calendar, although it was better at the beginning than I am now. So Anna knows that, and she's, she's getting better too, but she knows me more. When somebody comes in and says, does Libby have a free moment today and I have a booked calendar, she knows that some of it is like prep time, it's board meeting prep or it's, you know, it's prep time built in there and she knows like, yeah, she can probably take 15 minutes from that piece based on colors and, and just what, what it says in my calendar. So it helps her, help me be more productive, which is good. Anyway, it's been a, it's been a different, it's been definitely changed for me this year.
So I guess since it's on here, I'll go back and ask about public relations to say, I've heard nothing. I think that's a good thing. I wonder what the rest of the board is about.
I mean, the main thing I've heard about is the gym as of late from...
A certain individual?
More than him. There's a number of...
Certain individuals?
There's, there's, yeah, there's a group that's more than, yeah. And they have been calling or when I run into them places, like talking with me about it. They're people I know, so.
I mean, I feel like that's a budget issue and thus a board issue, not, it's not really a superintendent issue. I mean, we could put as much money in the budget that we wanted to.
No, no.
To have the gym be open, but we didn't.
We didn't. Well, also, when people complained about the gym last year, the schedule was unreal. If you've ever looked, gone in and met with Tracy and looked at the schedule, everything is like super, super scheduled, cross-scheduled, overscheduled.
Yeah. It's basically Tracy's full-time job right now.
Managing all of our facilities, yeah, and all of the community groups that are trying to reserve the facilities.
Yeah. Anna can probably speak to that because I don't want to put you on the spot, but she, Tracy was just on vacation and Anna took, took that over, so she had for that week.
Yeah, she's working with the school admins, all of the school's calendars are organized a little bit differently. It's gyms, it's classrooms, it's many, many calendars, multiple people within our district coming in and asking for time and then they continue to... And they're all locked all the time. They are, they're completely locked. It's a lot of shuffle for our own staff. You know, every day they'll come in and ask the same person because it's not much of a shuffle daily.
Well, thank you, Libby. This is super thorough and very informative. I think we are executive session time. We want to have one more item of the executive session.
I'll make a motion to accept this.
Oh, that's right.
And here to like to get off the conference agenda, thank you.
Second?
Second.
Favor? Aye. Any votes? Executive session, do we want to have one more item of the executive session to figure out what the exact name was?
Let's, discussion of public...
Official.
Official, please.
So in addition to contract negotiations, we have a little thingy for contract negotiations as well. Also add discussion of evaluation of a...
That doesn't need a funding, right?
No.
Okay. So we find that discussing contract negotiations in open session would put the board at a substantial disadvantage.
Second?
Pause and favor? Aye. And then motion to move into executive session for those two positions.
So, if that purpose is big contract negotiations and evaluation of a...
Second? Second? Pause and favor? Any votes? Okay.